It's now seven twenty-six in the following quarter, the December twentieth, twenty sixteen, regular meeting. To order, Carl, please follow the rule.
John.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Marat.
Yeah.
Doug.
Yeah.
Marcio. Crystal.
Crystal. No, it's gotta be Crystal saying here.
Here, here, here.
Okay. Uh, is that everything?
Yeah, we got a call.
Okay, we have a call. All right, so the first item of business is approval of minutes from previous meetings. We need a motion to approve the November twenty-second, twenty sixteen, regular meeting minutes. The December sixth membership, special membership meeting to waive reserves and the December sixth budget meeting. Okay, Marcio made the motion. Uh, is there a second?
I can say no.
Louis seconds. Any objection? Okay, well, we've been reading and they're approved. Uh, next item is the President's Message. Next item is the President's Message. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Uh, we actually weren't planning to meet again this month following our budget meeting uh, two weeks ago, but we're here tonight because a few urgent items require our attention before the holidays, including, among other things, our landscaping contract, which we were reminded is expiring at the end of this month. And uh, also this evening, we'll be discussing what to do about the service we've been getting uh, from our current elevator maintenance company, which has been generating many complaints, as well as possible fixes to our Wi-Fi system and replacing our aging gym equipment. If you'd like to bring any other items to the board's attention before we break for the holidays, please add your name to the good and welfare list because you won't have another chance to do so until next year. With that said, I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, happy and healthy twenty seventeen. Thank you. Next item, next item is the treasures report.
Well, for the November, uh, actually, uh, we have good news and we are, you know, under budget for fifteen thousand dollars. It comes from various items and despite, uh, you know, ten thousand dollars order and still we're over budget and we're still under budget, so we are doing better, I guess.
Yeah, we're uh, fifteen thousand dollars under budget for the month of, for the month of November. Thank you. And that actually is, yeah, that shows a lot of progress. Dan, thank you. You've been here only a couple of months and uh, we're already seeing some uh, tremendous progress in terms of getting the costs under control, so uh, big hand of applause for our new manager. Thank you, Dan.
John, does that mean that the rovers are not here all the time?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
The rovers are not around all the time?
I, I don't, does this have anything to do with the rovers?
No.
No.
We're not saving money because of that?
Oh, so it's going to a salary?
How about year-to-date? November is great, how about year-to-date? How are we budget-wise, under how much?
Year-to-date, we are over because of, of what I mentioned at the previous meeting, that uh, we had the um, the bank loan uh, that was refinanced, so under the previous bank loan, we had to, um, we were using operating funds in addition to the special assessment funds because of the uh, terms of the loan modification that we did two years ago, uh, when they were threatening to um, call the loan and then we were able to extend it for two years at that time, um, under somewhat stricter terms, as I mentioned at the last meeting. So we were... Yeah, I mentioned it.
Two years ago, we were using operating funds?
We had to, in order to, in order to meet the terms of the, of the um, the new modified loan alone, uh, they were requiring a, a significant increase in our monthly payments as well as a very large um, principal pay down back in, that was back in twenty fourteen, when the loan was uh, gonna be called, so uh, in the last few months, in August, we got it refinanced and now the payments are way down again, so we have more than enough with the, uh, to pay that, without having to go into operating funds, yeah.
Since we're with Bank United, are we saving money?
It's not the loan, you mean? The loan is not with Bank United?
No, since we're using Bank United with our maintenance.
That has nothing to do with saving money, it's just where we keep our money. Anyway, uh, next item is the manager's report. Dan?
Uh, spoke with Alpha Omega regarding uh, Unit E one J permanent application submitted, work to begin soon, hired Russell Pool Service to repair VAC alert system and Spa League hired them on a monthly trial basis to maintain the pool. Spoke with Beach Rama about contract renewal. They will uh, only be delivering chemicals and maintaining chlorine and acid uh, controllers. Board discussion is required for two AC repairs, um, to replace a five-ton compressor and repair the freon leak in the clubhouse large card room air conditioning unit and replace and install a five-ton AC package for the Adelweiss building. Oracle, uh, elevator is challenging our termination letter as not adhering to the contract we had with Ace Elevator Company. I will, I am reviewing the contract again. Contacted, uh, Motioner, uh, the elevator for a proposal, contacted Hello Tech for a proposal to analyze our Wi-Fi si- uh, situation. Their proposal is eighty-nine dollars per hour with a minimum of two hours. Uh, they are referral service and work should be done by the company uh, called Support Pro. Received the new Wi-Fi proposal from Evan Skev, the tech who straightened out the problems in the office when they had a virus, uh, for ninety-five dollars an hour, and he does not require any minimum. Watts Electric Company has proposed a cost of thirty-seven hundred dollars per building in materials for Wi-Fi project plus an undetermined labor charge. Received an estimate to replace two ellipticals, one recumbent cycle, one upright cycle and one treadmill for forty-eight hundred dollars plus two-hundred-dollar removal charge of the old equipment. Received two landscaping proposals, actually, we had a third one. Uh, one was from GRC Landscaping for four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for a total of fifty-three thousand, one hundred dollars per year. Uh, one from OC Land, uh, Lawn Service with an annual contract of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we are currently with a company called Davey and they are charging you, for this year of twenty seventeen, it would be sixty-three thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
Yeah, Dan, you have two items here for AC repairs. Um, do we need to approve that at this meeting?
Uh, no, they, they more or less have been on, on the back burners. Uh, we can, we can actually wait until after the beginning of the year when the new budget kicks in.
Okay, because um, one of them is for this room?
Yes, one is for this room and one is for the Adelweiss building.
Okay, so that's why it's been a little bit warm in here. So you recommend, do we wait?
Yeah, I would, I would wait till, uh, I wanna try to get another, uh, two estimates on this.
Okay.
We should have them by the first meeting of the year.
Okay, so just put it on our uh, agenda next month then. Um, all right, any other questions on the board for the manager on the manager's report?
Can I ask a question?
Uh, first of all, nobody? Okay.
And you said that you've got Russell Pool, uh, on a monthly basis?
No, it's on, it's on a one-month trial basis.
One month, well, have you noticed that the pool has been in such great condition?
Yes, absolutely.
Since they have been here, they have had that, the spa has been upgraded and fixed?
Yeah, I, I, I know all of that and I'm going to recommend that, that the board hire them on a full-time basis.
Because otherwise, you know, you're gonna have somebody here do it and it's gonna look like we've had...
No, I, we, we need somebody that's a professional, knows what they're doing, knows how to operate the uh, the controllers and make sure that every, the chemicals are balanced properly and that everything is running the way it should be.
The other thing is, we used to have a landscaper here prior to the one that the associate had hired.
We're talking about landscapers tonight.
Okay, and they were very, and they were very good.
I, I don't know who that was that you had before.
Well, so you don't have any records of it in your files? Any records of landscaping in your files?
The only, the only, the only one I have is that company that I mentioned as last, Davey, and they're the ones that wanna charge you sixty-three thousand dollars.
Now, sure, John must have it in his record, and also that tree outside that was supposed to be treated three times and accordingly...
I, I spoke to the landscaper when they came around and, and looked at it for estimate and they, they said that it doesn't need to be treated.
Well, they weren't the ones that did it, they had a doctor here that took care of it, a doc, a tree doctor, that took care of the tree, and he was supposed to do three treatments on that tree, and there was only two. I mean, the tree is worth saving, I mean, it's a beautiful tree, the doctor...
I, I will look into that.
I'd appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Couldn't we just hire somebody recently for landscaping?
Okay, there's another question over here, Miriam.
What's going on with the security cameras? What, what's happening with that?
Uh, the, the security cameras, we're, we're still looking into that, we'll probably address that in the next meeting. We're, we're going over proposals and bids. Uh, okay, so, let me see, I don't see anything else here that, uh, some of these items we're discussing as part of the agenda, so...
I have a question.
Yes.
Speaking of security, we don't have a security manager now for the last, what, four or six months? What happened to that, that income and that salary?
We have this, uh, one of the guards is the lead guard now, he's acting as the lead guard, so um, that's part, I guess that's part of the reason we, um, were under budget for this year.
And I, I'm also looking into hiring a, someone else as the, uh, the lead, the security man.
Okay, so, actually, uh, Dan, you mentioned the pool contract, so is that gonna be up in January, or when are we gonna deal with that? January?
Oh, the, uh, the...
The pool contract.
Yeah, that's, that was just for one month.
Okay, so we're still good until January?
Yeah.
Until the end of January?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the next item is...
Can I ask something before we go on?
Yes.
Um, the question, before I'm back to our question, that really wasn't answered. We haven't had, um, a security manager here for three, four months now.
Quentin is now the security manager.
But, he's still not getting paid what the manager was getting paid.
He gotta, he gotta raise.
Okay.
Tony, Tony, that's not an item on the, on this list here, but I see that you are on the good and welfare, so you can bring it up then. All right.
Okay, then don't cut me off.
Oh, no, of course not.
That's, that's your biggest habit.
That's why we have, that's why we have the, the hourglass.
Yeah, you use your hourglass, you don't have to double the hourglass. See this?
Oh, you better talk fast.
Yeah?
All right, the next... Next item is the sales and leasing report.
Okay, sales and leasing.
But it's all fast.
Sales from November through December. Z two N, so, uh, was declined, but it was, uh, supposed to be sold for seventy-six thousand, but for some reason, the uh, prospective buyer was declined. I two T was approved for ninety-five thousand. Y two O was approved for fifty thousand.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. Dan, I see the purchaser is Edwin Coffman, the seller is Doug Myers and the purchaser is Ed Coffman. I believe we have docs that limit ownership to a certain number of units and I think that particular owner may be over the limit.
Which one?
You have numbers of your leasing committee that's sitting right there.
Tony, can you address this, or do you recall?
Ed Coffman.
Yeah, Ed Coffman. I, I just don't wanna get into a situation where, it's not that I have anything against any of these people, I think they're lovely people, but the issue that we have is that then we can be accused of, of uh, giving preferential treatment.
Or sold why?
It's Ed, Ed Coffman is the, is the, is the purchaser, so then, um, we can't be selectively enforcing the docs. I don't know how this look, how this look through, because if, if one person can have whatever, six, five or six, that's a problem.
It's all Terry Cowes.
It says fifty thousand.
It's sold, the people are in it.
No, it says Doug Myers to Ed Coffman. It says Doug Myers was the owner and the purchaser is Ed Coffman. So, I don't know how that's slipped through. I two O? What's, what's, why is the one-bedroom? I mean, I'm sorry, why is the building so O, I don't know, O is what? O is a one-building, O is a one, one, one-bedroom. The building is Y, it's a one-bedroom, I think, O. Okay, I don't know how that slipped through. So, I think we need to take that, that, that one out of the, the report.
Okay, um, E three D approved for seventy-one thousand. S two M was purchased on a quick claim and approved. Y one S was declined. H one G says approved, but I don't have any amount. Uh, S one A was approved, again, no amount. Y one N approved seventy thousand. Uh, leases for November and December. Z three W, uh, was approved, I don't have on here, they didn't give me what the, uh, what the rent is.
Twelve fifty.
Y two Y was approved. H three A was approved. S one R was approved. Y one K approved. I three Q approved. E one L approved. B two L approved. B two U approved. S one B approved. H one I approved. Z two F approved. O three W approved. E three Q approved. Y two H declined. How come there's no prices? I don't understand. If it's approved, it means you got a piece of paper with the people involved and the amount involved, so why are there, why are you giving us that information without giving us dollars? I have to talk to the leasing and sales committee why they didn't put it on there. Tony?
We don't do that. That, that comes from us, that comes from your...
No, it's, it's actually a...
Well, that's still sales and leases.
No, Dan, this needs to, let's fix that.
No, I understand, I understand.
Okay, I don't wanna see it like this again.
Where does it come from? Where do the numbers come from? It's on a piece of paper. Where does it come from?
Wait, hold on. At the end, at the end.
Roll-overs.
Let's, let, let, hold on. Yeah, um, I agree, actually. I, I'll, I'll second that. I'll second that. Let's fix this sales and lease report and let's do it right the next time, okay? Um, I'll second the motion to table it. And uh, anyway, is there uh, any objection to tabling it? Any discussion on tabling it? Any objection? Hearing none, sales and lease is tabled, so nothing is approved. All right. Next item.
Hi, John, 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 he, he was...
Yeah.
...I made a motion to table, I just thought about it. Uh, that can affect people moving in for the end of the year, people might need to get approved this week. Uh, Tony, is, is, and are you aware of the situation? Do you think that anybody in particular, even a purchase, you told the car that you denied it? If you don't, everybody...
Whatever was done is, is, whatever he asked there was done already.
I, I think what, what she's saying is that, uh, what we're doing is ratifying it because since we don't meet every week, at some point, we have to give these sales and lease, uh, authority to, to do some things and then we ratify, but uh, the board doesn't have to ratify. And um, I think, I'd rather just ratify. Okay, but the problem with that, the problem with that, Marcio, is that sometimes we go a couple of months without meeting and we can't let people wait for two months because then we're in violation of, uh, seven eighteen at that point, I think. So, um, we can either table the whole thing or we can, uh, or, or we can remove those items that we have an issue with and approve the rest. Uh, but, we already tabled the whole thing, but anyway, I, I'm gonna make a footnote to that, Dan, is that please make sure you look into that, uh, unit that I mentioned where it looks like the purchaser is over the limit. The purchaser is over the limit, okay?
Yes.
And make sure also that, uh, we have all the, all the purchase prices and all the rent price, all the rent prices, okay? All right. Uh, next item. Next item is the elevator contract.
Okay, we have, uh, Oracle, as everybody knows, um, I sent them a cancellation notice at the beginning of the month, uh, they're contending that it is not a valid cancellation. Uh, I, I believe it is, but regardless, Oracle is going to be charging, uh, starting next year approximately sixteen hundred and thirty dollars a month to maintain the elevators, their version of maintaining elevators. Uh, I've got an estimate here from Express Elevator for fifteen hundred and forty dollars a month and, uh, from Motion Elevator for thirteen hundred and sixty-four dollars a month.
What if you say Motion, how much?
Thirteen sixty-four. No, they happen to be a good company. I've, I've dealt with them over in, on the beach in Fort Lauderdale.
Okay, which one is the cheapest one here?
Motion.
Um, did you check out their credentials?
Yes, and I, I've worked with them in one association on the beach in Fort Lauderdale.
Are they good?
Yes.
All right, so what's your recommendation? Motion, because it's a little bit, it's a low-stick, correct?
Yeah, if you're gonna go...
What's the difference in the bids?
Um, about two hundred?
Dollars per month?
Yeah, between two to three hundred dollars per month.
Well, that adds up, that's like three, you know?
Yeah.
Go for three thousand.
And Motion, Motion is, uh, on their contract, um, they don't charge for overtime, which is something Oracle does every time they walk on property, it's, every ticket says overtime on it. Also, their, their, uh, contract is just for one year, basically, they're asking to be put on a one-year trial basis, and then after that, uh, if we decide to renew them, I believe it goes to a three-year contract.
That's Motion?
That's Motion, yes.
Uh, what's the cancellation policy?
Thirty days.
Thirty days period, or is this, do they, we never read the report?
Let me, let me be sure.
So, then, how are we known after the first three years?
We have, we have to, uh, we have to sign a new contract, I think, for three years.
Is it here? What page is it?
I'm, no, I'm looking for it right now.
The tenant miracle, I did an order renewal after the first year, three years.
It's on page four, John. The, uh, third paragraph from the bottom. You agree to notify us in writing of any change in ownership lesser, less see or management on the premise at least thirty days prior to such change. Should you fail to do so, we, we will retain responsibility for payment.
Dan, does that include hydraulics?
Nobody does hydraulics. Every company that I called and spoke to bad hydraulics, they don't, they don't do hydraulics. If you, oh, on the last page, the last paragraph, the either party shall default in the performance of its obligation, the non-defaulting party shall send written notice by certified mail which reasonably describes its default within thirty days. The defaulting party does not cure the default, the non-defaulting party shall then be further ten days written notice termination, so it's a total of forty days.
Okay, I don't see the cancellation policy here.
Right, right above where you sign.
Page four?
No, pa- page five. That last paragraph.
It says, the default and performance, that's not the same thing as, as canceling, if there any reason. It says defaulting and performance. Is that the only way we can get, we can cancel?
Yeah, just about, any of these contracts is, read the same way, that you have to give them at least thirty days to try to correct the, the situation.
So, we can't actually cancel them if we find another, uh, company that's either less expensive or has some other...
I don't, I don't think honestly that you're gonna find a company that's less expensive, um, but what they're saying is that if they can't fix a problem within thirty days, after that, you, you give them ten days notice that they're terminated.
Right, but I mean, that's pretty strict. They can interpret that how they want. So, I mean, what, what's the, uh, cancellation on the other one? On Express? Yeah, Express.
Ninety days. You cut, it's on, uh, the next to last page, about the middle, says agreement terms. The customer can cancel this agreement at any time given ninety days, uh, notice by certified mail. Express Elevator Company has the right to suspend or cancel this agreement at any time.
What's the, what's the monthly on that one again? The monthly rate?
For Express, fifteen forty.
And on the, on Motion?
Thirteen sixty-four.
Thirteen sixty-four.
How much do you have to give for a contract?
I'm, I'm sorry?
How much do you have to give to sign the contract?
Nothing.
No, twenty thousand, nothing?
No, nothing. Sign the contract, they start working.
And upon renewal of the new contract for three years, do you have the right to renegotiate the price for the three years?
You always have the right to renegotiate a price when...
With that in the contract?
When this one, when this one contract, when each contract is, is up, okay, and you give them notice that you're not going to renew, then...
But it says it's auto...
Is this, okay.
It says it's automatically renewed after the year.
Right, but, but, okay, it's automatically renewed, but if you choose not to renew that contract, you give them notice. You're not locked into a contract, you're not locked into a contract ever.
That's not what she's asking.
That's not what that said.
I've, I've dealt with this...
The motion contract doesn't say that.
Right, you, you have, you have the right to, when that, before that contract renews, if you wanna get out of the contract, you have to give them written notice that you're not going to renew the contract.
That's not what she's asking.
Yes, she's asking me, she's
She's asking if it's going to be the same price if you renew.
Okay, if, no, if you, whenever the contract is going to renew, if you, if you're just gonna let it automatically renew,
But do we have